We can start, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fossey. Okay, I need to get rid of that screen and go over to the screen. So. Good evening, everyone. Let's call the meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for September 14th, 2021. I'm Rebecca McCetty, the Chair, and in addition to Commission members, we are joined this evening by Richard Baldelli, Planning and Zoning Department Director and Zoning Enforcement Officer, Karen Martin, Town Planner, and Eileen White, Commission Recording Secretary. The meeting is being recorded and links to Zoom meetings are posted on the Planning and Zoning page on the town's website and can be found by clicking on the Zoom image and then selecting the date of the meeting you'd like to listen to. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been posted on the Planning and Zoning page on the town's website and provides a Zoom registration link for those who wish to attend the meeting, as well as links to all supporting documentation for the matters before us this evening. Before we begin, let's take Commission attendance. We have a quorum, but we'll just do it in that way. We'll formally recognize everybody who's here. So Ms. Constantino? Not yet. Mr. Dowdell?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Fossey?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Hanlon?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrick?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Katz?
Terribly.
Thank you. Mr. Nagy?
Present.
Thank you, Ben. And Mr. Robbins?
Here.
Thank you. So we have eight of the nine Commissioners with us this evening. We have a quorum and we will go forward. So the meeting format this evening will be to go through the agenda in the order presented. We ask those not speaking to please mute your device. We also ask for your patience during the proceedings as there may be technical issues with speakers and presentations. There is one public hearing this evening, a Commission-initiated revision to the zoning regulations to enact a temporary moratorium on applications for approvals, excuse me, applications for or approvals of recreational cannabis establishments in Ridgefield, as well as definitions of the uses subject to the moratorium. The public hearing process will be as follows. The Planner will read the legal notice and present the proposed revisions. The Planner, excuse me, the Commission may ask questions during the presentation, but if not, will be given an opportunity to. And then we will recognize any technical correspondence and then ask for public comment. If the public hearing is continued, we will announce the date before we adjourn this evening. And if it closes, we will discuss later this evening during the administrative working part of the meeting. Following the close of the public hearing and potential discussion of the proposed moratorium, we will then receive and schedule sit walks and, if required, public hearings for four applications: a revision to a special permit to allow the use of temporary mobile light tower at 115 Barlow Mountain Road, which is Scotland Elementary School; a special permit for a pool in the front yard at 65 Peasable Ridge Road; a VD's Village District application for sign at 407 Main Street, which is the Carnell Insurance Building. Sorry about my phone. And Village District application for signage at 417 Main Street, which is the former Cafu space. After the agenda items, we will also recognize any correspondence received since our last meeting and act on the meeting minutes for July 27th, 2021. As with all Commission meetings held in person or via Zoom, all public comments are taken only during public hearings. And before we go to the Planner for the legal notice, I would like to make a brief comment about the proposed public, excuse me, the public hearing for the proposed moratorium. The Commission is not taking a position for or against recreational cannabis by proposing a temporary moratorium on any applications or approval of cannabis establishment. What we are proposing is to follow the same procedure we used in 2014 when the state passed legislation to allow the sale of medical cannabis. And then we amended the town zoning regulations for a temporary time-limited moratorium. We're proposing the same process this evening. A moratorium gives the town and the Commission time to fully understand the recent legislation and to gather community input before drafting regulations to either permit or prohibit recreational cannabis establishments in Ridgefield. So our public hearing and discussion tonight is only on the moratorium, not the pros or cons of cannabis. So, thank you. And we will go to the Planner to read the legal notice. Karen?
Sure. Can you hear me?
You can hear me very well.
Having sound difficulties this evening. Okay, the legal notice, which was published in the Ridgefield Press, reads, "Notice is hereby given that the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold its September 14th, 2021 meeting remotely using video technology in real time. Also, not less than 24 hours prior to the meeting. The public, upon written request submitted to the office at 66 Prospect Street, can be provided with necessary electronic equipment to attend such a meeting." The agenda was provided, the Zoom link was provided on the agenda, and the item is item number one. File number A-21-5, a regulation amendment application per Section 9.2. B of the Town of Ridgefield zoning regulations to add recreational marijuana establishments to Section 8.6, which is uses subject to moratorium, and also amend Section 2.2, which is defined terms to add related definitions. Commission-initiated application. The plans and details and all the documents were on file to be viewed at the Viewpoint Cloud online permit system. At this hearing, interested persons may join in the Zoom call and be heard. Written communications will also be received.
Thank you, Karen. And I note for the record that Ms. Constantino has joined us. So we have all nine members in attendance at the public hearing this evening. Hey, Karen, you were going to screen share.
Yep.
The proposed regulation so that those who don't have the benefit of an additional device can have it in front of them.
Um, I think I need to be made a host.
We're a host. You're not a host?
It is telling me I am not a host.
Really?
Mr. Baldelli will fix that for you.
Yes.
Okay, let's try now.
While she's working on that, maybe a point of clarification. I think our agenda references this as A-21-3. But if, at least the copy of the agenda I have, I think it says that. But so if people are looking it up online themselves, they need to go to A-21-5, which is what Karen just said.
Oh, the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. You're looking at, yes, I was looking at the regulation number. You're looking at the agenda number. Yes, I have it as three as well.
Yeah, but if people are trying to look it up, it's A-21-5, which is what Karen just said.
Oh, sorry, Richard. Can you make me a host again? I got kicked off.
This is why we, oh, it's showing that Ben is a host as well. Is it, do we have a limit to the number of hosts we can have on Zoom?
Um, we should not, but. And that's weird because I. How about now, Karen?
Let's see.
Okay, Ben is no longer a co-host. But it does not show Karen.
Can you try one more time?
Yeah, it's not showing her as co-host, John, Richard.
Why do we need that up on the screen anyway, if I may ask?
So, but so. Everybody can see the proposed regulation, John. It's not very long, and we thought it might be helpful to the public to see what the language of the moratorium that we're proposing is.
Okay.
If it continues to be a, oh, there you go, Karen. You're a co-host now. And you're gone again. Hmm.
Jesus Christ.
Well, since we do see, this is why we always apologize ahead of time. Okay, why don't we just go through it while Karen tries to reconnect? So for those of us who have it in front of us, we can follow along. But the reason is, the Planning and Zoning Commission recognizes the role that municipal planning and zoning commissions in Connecticut have been assigned by the legislature to make decision regarding the allowance of recreational cannabis in their towns. It references the discussion that we had on July 27th with Mr. Marconi, the First Selectman, the Director of Social Services, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Morris, who is the Chair of ECDC, as well as Public Comments, and recognizes that the Commission has proposed a temporary moratorium as a result of our discussions on July 27th. As defined by, for applications or approvals of cannabis established, as established by Public Act 21-1. In order to allow ample time for consideration, a one-year moratorium is proposed with the possibility to end the moratorium sooner should the Commission act on permanent regulations prior to the one-year date. So then we go to Ridgefield zoning regulations 8.6, which are uses subject to moratorium. And our proposed amendment to the regulations is to, under A, intent and purpose, that the Commission has determined the following uses have the potential to impair the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens, and that a temporary limited moratorium is needed in order to properly develop restrictions and standards for the implementation of these uses. And then B, identifies the subject use, use, excuse me, identifies the uses subject to the moratorium. And the new language reads, "Any cannabis establishment, as defined by Section 1 of Public 21-1, including the following uses." And there are 11 uses. And in order, they are producer, dispenser facility, cultivator, micro-cultivator, retailer, hybrid retailer, food and beverage manufacturer, product manufacturer, product packager, delivery service, and transporter. C, new language states, "No application for any of the above listed uses shall be accepted or permitted in any zone within the town of Ridgefield during the effective date stated in Section 8.6.8.1", which is the next part, which is the effective date and expiration. The effective date of the moratorium on the application, installation, or creation of any cannabis establishment is the date of adoption of this regulation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, together with the filing of the amendment with the town clerk, beginning on the date that the Commission determines this evening and expiring one year later on that same date a year later, or upon further action by the Planning and Zoning Commission, whichever comes first. Under E exclusions, there are none. And then, under 2.2 defined terms, there is a list of all the definitions of cannabis, cannabis establishment, producer, dispenser facility, cultivator, micro-cultivator, retailer, hybrid retailer, food and beverage manufacturer, product manufacturer, product packager, delivery service, and transporter. And I'm sorry, I had to read it.
I'm having too many technological difficulties.
That's just fine.
But yeah, Becky, and the definitions are copied word for word from the state statute.
Thank you, Karen. So that's what's in front of us this evening, to consider a moratorium. And it's at the table for questions, comments from the Commission.
I would simply ask, if I may, Madam Chair.
Mr. Katz?
Why we would not go for a moratorium. It's almost a rhetorical question. It seems to me that it gives all of us, mainly the town itself, breathing room to try to consider this from all the aspects that have been brought to our attention about it and to consider the pros and cons, both individually and as a Commission as a whole, so that we, so that we are seriously representing the town when we do finally make a decision and that we haven't jumped into this thing with individual prejudices that some of us may not have had a chance to think through clearly.
Thank you, John. Additional comments?
Yeah, so I guess as the one person who voted no on the moratorium public hearing, my perspective or my understanding is if we do nothing, essentially, an application could come in as whatever the nearest or closest to use is. If it's retail, it would be retailer. If it's growing, it would be an agricultural use. And my opinion is, I think that should, that should be the baseline. We should essentially do nothing. But if we want to restrict it or regulate it in certain other ways, we can discuss that and you know, we can have that via a public hearing, talk about how we want to regulate it. But I don't, and so, yeah, I'll reiterate what I said last time. I'm against the moratorium. We should be talking about how to regulate it.
Thank you, Joe. Additional comments? Susan?
So just a little clarification on what Joe just said. If we do nothing, people can start bringing applications. And I thought the moratorium was to, to sort of stop that. I thought that's.
It is. Both, both of your statements are correct, Susan. If we do nothing, the town would have to receive any applications that would come in for any type of cannabis establishment allowed by state statute. The moratorium would prevent that for a time period established in the moratorium if it were to be approved. And then that would give the town and the Commission time to have these public conversations, decide what direction we want to go, and then develop the regulations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Others?
Yeah, I sort of support the, what John Katz talked about earlier. In terms of giving ourselves some time so that we can sort of look at what we're about doing and make sure that the population is comfortable with it. And it's something that we can, we can support and have best to support it. So I agree with going ahead with that.
Thank you, Ben. Others?
I think.
Rob?
One thing that, I guess, an important piece of information from my perspective, and I'm happy to take if anyone on this Commission knows something different or understands something different, is that the, we Planning and Zoning Commission were not the be-all and end-all that would actually license an individual to operate a particular business. There's a, we're essentially our one, one stop along the process for somebody to operate such a business in town. And my understanding, this is, this is the part that I think the news reporting has been a little unclear. The law is not entirely clear. My, my view, there's what I think is called a social equity council that's being established by the governor. And the social equity council actually ultimately will be running a lottery, that's my understanding, on the, on the licenses which will be granted at a state level to these operators. So whether or not an individual comes to Ridgefield Planning and Zoning and gets permission to operate from a planning and zoning perspective, they still will need to seek a license from the state. And these licenses, as I understand it, will go through a lottery process that actually will not likely commence until next calendar year. So, and this, again, I'll take any correction. My understanding is if somebody comes to our planning and zoning and we don't have a regulation in place to, to limit or guide locations, hours, et cetera, then essentially it will fall as, as, as a couple of people have mentioned before, it will fall under the next most relevant zone. It will then likely go through quickly from a planning and zoning perspective. But then you still have to go to the state and get a license. And so we risk, if we do nothing, my understanding is we risk that multiple people may actually get planning and zoning approval, quoting, I'm doing the quotes intentionally. They will be sitting there with, with planning and zoning approval, and they'll just be waiting for a license to happen at the state level that doesn't happen until next year anyway. So our moratorium, again, as I understand it, essentially just says, let's get the license collect process cleared first, while we can also figure out if, how we want to regulate the business. And then the two can actually sort of occur together at the same time next year. So to me, the moratorium doesn't do anything except for allow the process to happen kind of at the right time, which isn't until next calendar year anyway. And again, that's, that's my understanding, and that's why I think a moratorium should not be so controversial because these businesses are not going to operate in the next few months anyway. But if anybody has a different viewpoint or understanding of the law, I'd love to hear it.
Thank you, Rob. Joe Dowdell?
Yeah, the comment of, so yeah, it is a lottery process, and there's actually two separate lotteries. So like you said, there's like an equity aspect, so half of them will be like equity lottery. And then the other half is like just an open lottery for anyone. And yeah, you said that there won't be any licenses for some time, you know, a year or so. But one of the steps along the way to get a license is you need zoning approval wherever you're going to be before you can get your, you know, before you can apply or get your license. So the way I see it is we kind of, if we delay too long, we kind of risk, you know, not being able to get the revenue in our town. If someone can't get a license at all in our town, if we, if we wait too long and not have any ability for someone to apply to get zoning approval before they can apply to get their license, then we risk not having one at all, right? So I'd rather, so that's why I say I'd rather we do nothing now. And if we want to regulate it or restrict it, in some way, we can do that. But I see it more of a risk to revenue to put a moratorium and delay it too long.
Thank you, Joe. Joe Fossey, where's your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I, um, it's been a long time since we met, but I, I thought that we had decided that this was a social issue and that the Board of Selectmen was going to deal with it. And we were going to give the Board of Selectmen time to do their due diligence, hold their public hearings, or whatever they were going to do, and then, and then, and then regulate it by ordinance. So I, I, you know, I thought that was the direction we were going, and I support that direction. And I support the moratorium and then letting the Board of Selectmen deal with it because, you know, I, I thought we all sort of concurred that this was more a social issue than a zoning issue. Thank you.
The way the legislation is written, planning and zoning, because planning and zoning regulates land use in the state of Connecticut. Oh, I understood the conversation that it was a hybrid. We agreed it was a social issue. It had a social component to it. We thought the Board of Selectmen might be able to, you know, you know, add a referendum question. And I see several members of the Board of Selectmen are with us tonight, so perhaps we'll get some follow-up on that. But ultimately, whatever the town would decide to do, the Planning and Zoning Commission would still need to write a regulation, either to permit or to prohibit. So it's, it's a, it's a town-wide combined issue this time, and that's how I understood it. So, John Katz, your hand was up?
Well, I, I just would like to echo what, some of what Joe said. It seems to me that there were, there was not necessarily a consensus, but it felt like a majority of us felt that this was something that should be legislated by the town, per se, and that it should rest in finality with the Board of Selectmen. I'm looking at it from a different point of view. I certainly agree with that. I think the Board of Selectmen needs to weigh in on this and make the final decision. But I'm not concerned at all about the state. I'm not thinking about a moratorium in order to give the state any leeway or flexibility or whatever. I think we, as a community, need to solve this problem for ourselves and tell the Board of Selectmen, from the Planning and Zoning Commission's point of view, what it is we think ought to be done. We would be a participant in the decision that the Board of Selectmen makes to the degree that we would weigh in with our feelings about it. But I don't know, but that we, each of us has clarity as to where we stand on the social issue of do we, as a town, believe that this should be permitted, a permitted use within the town? I think we need to wrestle with that ourselves before we can make any kind of a sensible decision to contribute to the Board of Selectmen's thinking. And to do that, I think we need a moratorium.
Agree completely, John. Comments from others? Susan?
Sorry, I'm muted. Yes, I agree. I agree with part of what you said, Rebecca, and also John. And I do think that, yes, the Selectmen, and I do think that we still should, you know, weigh in perhaps from a planning perspective at some point. And so I do agree with, with John, what you just added on to that. Yeah, I think that we should, I think that we should, but definitely I think that the Selectmen can take it to a place that maybe we can't. Because what we've, what we've seen so far and from watching presentations that some of us got to watch, things are very one-sided right now. So I, I think that it's always a good idea to weigh the facts on both sides before we make a decision. But to take it over to the Selectmen, I think, with the moratorium is the, the best idea. And then let it, us come back and add to it later. So I agree with both of you.
Thank you, Susan. Charles, where's your hand up? You're muted, Charles.
Okay, thank you. Susan, Susan, you mentioned that things are very one-sided at the moment. Can you elaborate on what you mean by one-sided at the moment?
I just meant those of us that watched the presentation that, like the ECDC did a presentation for us, and then some letters came in, and they seemed to be more on one side. And we didn't get, we didn't get a chance to ask for certain facts or ask other questions yet that I'm sure will be uncovered once the, the Board of Selectmen were to take it over. I also don't think enough people are involved yet weighing in. I mean, I can see on here, we don't have, certainly don't have a consensus of the town by who's watching tonight. So I just think that it would be more well-rounded because it's one thing to bring in a presentation, but when you bring in a presentation, you may have sort of a slant to that presentation. And I think when we get more people involved, which comes when it, it goes under the Board of Selectmen, they get a, they get a bigger following than us. Is that okay to say?
Yeah, I think so.
That, that will get more opinions, and we can dig a little deeper into facts. I didn't feel like there were, you know, there were certain questions asked during the meeting, and those factual questions couldn't be answered. A lot of questions like, oh, I, I don't know. So those are the kinds of things with a moratorium, then we could dig deeper. And then everybody kind of pitch in and look for, look for the information. It was like we were missing the, what is it, the bibliography or the, where you put your notes at the end, the sources? And we were missing those definitely. So, and that's not a positive or negative either way. It's just, just more fact-finding. Thank you.
Others? Richard?
Okay, I just wanted to point out that, while typically something like this may not be a normal zoning issue, based on the state law that was passed, it is actually directed at planning and zoning. And it is sitting in your laps.
Right.
And whichever way you go with it, if you go back to Karen's memo, there's really going to be, end up being four choices. And as has been said tonight, we do want to make it clear that doing nothing is actually doing something. Doing nothing would allow an application to be submitted to the town. One of the things to tail, also to tail off on Rob's comments was that the moratorium will stop any application from coming in. And one of the time constraints with that, with that is if you choose to say adopt a reg that prohibits it, there, there's like no negative time factor involved. No matter what happens, someone would make an application for this town. And eventually, if you had a rule, the state will approve an application. You don't know who that person may be, but there will be one in the town that will be approved by the state, either through no action on your part or adopting various rules to allow it. But I strongly recommend that an action, one way or the other, do. that an action, one way or the other, do be taken by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Because the state really did just put it right in your lap.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, Rob, was your hand up? I saw a virtual hand.
Just gonna, I was just gonna sort of, uh, actually, um, you know, dovetail off of, I think that you, you made a really nuanced but important point. I want to make sure that, uh, people kind of really key into it, use the word hybrid. And in fact, you know, as a couple of people have said here, um, that the state has, you know, given the, the authority to planning and zoning to, you know, to make a regulation concerning this. I think we, my, my understanding, and I realize maybe different people have different perspectives. But when we debated it last time initially, I thought my, my understanding was that, um, as you, I think you said, Becky, that we've really kind of looked to the Board of Selectmen to, um, to kind of handle the, 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 the key kind of core question, the fundamental question of do we want to allow this in our community? The if question. Um, now, if they, if they decide that, that they're supportive, which of course some, some things so far doesn't, doesn't sound like they are. But if they are supportive, then there's definitely a planning and zoning aspect, in my view, on regulating the locations, the hours, the signage, all of that is very clear in the state statute. The planning and zoning has a big role to play. It's not, planning and zoning can't wash its hands.
No.
I thought that we had sort of mostly aligned on the idea that, um, that what we wanted to do is not create conflict within government where we're having hearings separate from the Board of Selectmen on the if question. Let, and that to me, the moratorium is not a question. I don't personally think we should be debating the moral, ethical, economical issues, at least with respect to the moratorium. The moratorium to me is about getting the right order of the process. And the right order of the process is allowing the Board of Selectmen to handle the if question in town. And then if we're going to do this in our town, then we, planning and zoning, need to come in with planning and zoning regulations on the location, the hours, et cetera. That's in my perspective, our role. And what, what I'd like to do is see the Board of Selectmen and members of the public handle the if question. And then we step in when necessary for our part, which, which by the way, will be, you know, no later than a lottery if we do this right from a timing perspective. So, um, that's, again, maybe my view, but it's also, I think it's, it's also important because it's, it's sort of as you described, the hybrid approach to, to, to getting this done the right way.
Thank you, Rob. Charles?
Um, I, I fully agree with Rob's assessment and understanding based on the meeting we had on July 27th. Uh, it was my understanding and initially of the, uh, the path forward was sort of suggested by John, that it will be the Board of Selectmen that will determine the if. It will be the Planning and Zoning Commission that will sort of determine the how, the regulation, where, the hours, the location, et cetera.
Right.
It's my, it's my understanding that the planning and zoning, again, a moratorium is okay, but that, that planning and zoning would not, would not have influence necessarily or a, uh, participation with the Board of Selectmen as part of the if process. And we would leave it to the Board of Selectmen to make that determination and potentially write an ordinance based on their, you know, their, their opinion. And I'm not saying one way or the other, but they would write the ordinance that would determine, uh, against it or whatever, however, four is different. Um, you know, as part of this overall process. So that, that's my understanding. And it's not to say that planning and zoning washes its hands of this issue, but it does suggest that it passes the responsibility to the Board of Selectmen. And that responsibility would be passed, it needs to be passed in a formal manner. It just isn't, okay, you guys, you do it over at the BOS. There should be some formal discussion or written vote as to how this occurs. But that, those are the folks who are going to deal with this quote, "social issue."
Well, I'm going to jump in here. That was not my understanding. My understanding was we were asking the Board of Selectmen to add a referendum question to get a sense of the community. Um, either in November, Mr. Marconi suggested May. Uh, we, we don't have the ability to add referendum questions. That rests with the Board of Selectmen. And I understood our conversation in the end of July to where we really wanted a broad sense of community input, more than we normally get at a public hearing, either at the Board of Selectmen or at Planning and Zoning. Because we thought that this was an important enough issue to the town to where a broader sense of the community would be beneficial. I thought we were looking for Board of Selectmen input that way, to get a referendum question going forward. The way the legislation is written, it, planning and zoning writes the regulation. It doesn't say anything about the Board of Selectmen writing an ordinance.
No.
It says the Planning and Zoning Commission will, you know, write a regulation, either permitting or prohibiting. So I thought that our, our collaboration with the Board of Selectmen was to help us get a sense of the community feel and the community input could best be realized through a referendum question. That, that's why.
And, and I, 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 yes, I understand that. But I, I, again, I may misunderstood. I believe it's certainly, uh, we don't have sufficient time to put this on the November ballot. I don't believe that's the case. Uh, certainly Rudy or others could try and.
Right, we can, we go to the public or publicly can ask, uh, Rudy where, where that's.
Okay, and they can talk about that. But again, I, I could be wrong, but I thought at the end of this process, we determined that we would not, the referendum approach, which I actually suggested as part of the just process, would not occur and that the Board of Selectmen would make the decision on their own, without a referendum, to say, yes, I think we should go forward and we'll allow it in town, then planning and zoning will do the regulation. Or no, we're going to write an ordinance. It's not going to happen in Ridgefield. We're not going to allow it. Did I misunderstand something?
Well, yes, because we're getting beyond the, the intent of this public hearing this evening is whether or not to have a moratorium.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Charles, I think what you're discussing should be a subsequent conversation after we determine whether or not to have a moratorium.
That's perfectly fine. No, no question there.
George, you had your hand up? You're muted, George. That's going to be, I think that's going to probably be a t-shirt, a hat for the longest time. You're muted.
I, uh, I thought July 27th, we had definitely spoken about a referendum for the town to find out what our citizens thought.
Right.
And not let us make a decision or the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Well, let the town make a decision. So we should be going through with a moratorium until we can get these things settled. Find out what the citizens really want.
Agreed. Very, very good. So I just want to make sure we're talking more broadly than the referendum. I think we've all spoken, excuse me, to the, uh, moratorium. I think we've all spoken why we either support or don't a referendum. And I think anything beyond that, the conversation, the interesting conversation Charles was trying to have should be a subsequent conversation and in the near future. You know, maybe probably in October, we should be having a conversation like that. But a moratorium for, uh, a year's time would give the town, the Board of Selectmen, the legislature, the lottery system and the commission all time to let this process evolve and understand what we're really dealing with. John, your hands up?
Yeah, this is a minor point, but as we go through the discussion of this thing, I think we need to be careful that we forget the, the planning part of it. We're acting as a zoning commission here.
Right.
And if we, if we were a separate board, if there were a, a, a planning commission and a zoning commission in this town, the zoning commission would be handling this.
Right.
So I think we need to be clear about that.
Well, thank you, John. Okay. Richard, did we get any technical correspondence on, um, the proposed amendment?
As of 6:30 this evening, we did not receive one item from anyone.
Okay, okay. So how about, I'd like to, uh, we have, uh, 14 attendees, uh, for the meeting and this is the only thing on the agenda. So I would imagine that people are here to, uh, let us know how they feel about this. And I would like to hear from Mr. Marconi and the members of the Board of Selectmen who have joined us. So any objection if we open this up to public comment?
No.
No? Okay. Uh, I do see a hand has been raised for a while and that's Mr. Morris. So Mr. Morris, we will recognize you first since you've had your hand raised. And then Mr. Marconi after that. So Jeffrey, we should be able to hear you? What happened? Did we, oh, there he is.
He's there.
There he is, there he is. Okay.
It always takes a second to get.
It does, yeah. Hello, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
Um, so, you know, I'm here to represent the Economic and Community Development Commission. And, you know, we just, we held that debate, that conversation and on August 30th just to make sure this conversation stays alive. And I appreciate your keeping it alive. You know, so that we can understand, we as a town can understand the ramifications of it. And to think like, is this a good economic thing for the town or is it not a good economic thing for the town? And obviously the social issues weigh in there as well. Um, I do want to reiterate what Richard said, that the law does put the onus on planning and zoning to make this decision. Obviously, that can be sent to somebody else to help make that decision. Um, but the, you know, one main thing to consider is, um, we want to make sure that if there's a moratorium, that we don't lose the licensing if there's a lottery happening. That if we have a one year moratorium and they're like, well, Ridgefield's not making a decision for the next year and all the licenses get given away, that we don't lose that. So I just want to make sure that there's some sort of provision in the moratorium that, you know, allows for Ridgefield to get a license if it wants a license, you know, so it doesn't lose the opportunity. So that once the town, whether it's through referendum, whether it's the planning and zoning, whether it's through the Board of Selectmen says, yes, we want to do this, we have the option. And if the town says, no, we don't want to do this, then we give up our license. But I just think that we want to make sure we don't lose that option. And so that there's some provision in there that we don't lose the option.
Oh, well, planning and zoning doesn't have any authority or role in the licensing. Uh, that's all done by the state and, um, I'm Rob on this. I, I, the state is still in the process of putting that together. They haven't even, I don't think have, have they fully, well, Mr. Dowdell may have more information.
I was going to say that. Well, I was just going to say that, though, he was commenting on the same thing I commented on, which was, I believe you need to have zoning approval before you can get your license. So if we have a moratorium for a year, someone might say, oh, well, I can't get my license there because they don't have, allow any, you know, zoning, or they don't allow any permitting there. So if we delayed too long and there's no ability at all for anyone to get a license or a zoning approval, which means you can't get a license, um, then we risk the possibility that all the licenses and the lottery will be given away to someone else. And so even if we decide in a year that we do want to allow it, it might be too late.
My understanding was it's not a one and done. I mean, it's not going to, like, it's not going to be one way of licensing and then if you didn't get one, you're out. I, I mean, that's just the first round.
Yeah, they haven't decided how many licenses they're going to be. There, there could, there's going to be some number and they might have more in the future. I believe it's in 2024 or something, they're going to review it again. So there could be more in the future. Um, but yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I just, I just want to make sure it's just part of the conversation that we don't, like, we're not debating this thing for a whole year. We're not going out there and doing a referendum and then all of a sudden we're saying, oh, we lost the license anyway. So if there's any way we can have a communication with the state to say, you know, if we have a moratorium, can we not lose the, um, ability to get a license?
But.
I think, I mean, a debate in a moratorium, I think is a great idea because, you know, just by this conversation, by other conversations, a, a lot of people just don't know how this is going to look and how it's going to work. And, you know, it, it would be silly to be debating this whole thing and realize like, oh, all the licenses are gone. We can't even do it anyway.
But Jeffrey, you, from your, your comments, and I appreciate your comments and your concern, the state isn't the one, excuse me, the town isn't the one that the state issues the license to. It would be an individual who would come before the commission to get some sort of a zoning approval. And then they would have to go to the state to get a license. The state is not issuing a license to every town with 25,000 residents in it. It's the other, it's the other way around.
I agree, but I just wonder whether there's any way, I mean, ECDC would be happy to look into it. But whether there's any way to, to make that clear that if we're having a year moratorium and, you know, 52 towns and cities in the state don't have moratoriums and they all of a sudden open up their process, do they get all the licenses? I, I don't know that answer and I don't know if anybody here does. And I just would love there to be some clarity on that.
Okay, thank you. That sounds like, uh, I think for Karen to look into. You have, Rob?
Can I ask Mr. Morris just two quick questions? Uh, first, Jeff, if, if, obviously we, we need to do some sort of fact based homework. If we can, you know, check with the state and whatnot and more or less validate that, that, let's, let's pretend they, they won't be issuing licenses until at least March next year. In that event, would you, would you be supportive? It sounds like you would be of a moratorium during that period while, so that we can get our regulations in order before that, before those licenses begin to be issued? Is that something that you would be supportive of?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if a moratorium means that we're just saying, let's put a hold on this until we really understand the issue and that we're not going to miss out on anything and, you know, I, I think it's a great idea because, you know, clearly the town, the people who live here should weigh in. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, whose onus it is to sort of make this, you know, just needs to get their hands around it. So I think, yes, I think a moratorium is definitely a good idea as long as we don't lose the opportunity to.
A second question is kind of a corollary, I guess. If, is it, is it fair from an ECDC perspective? Would you be supportive of recreational cannabis establishments in any zone in, in town where, where they might, where, in other words, would you, do you believe that it would, it's a good idea for recreational cannabis retail to occur in any location?
I'm going to interrupt here.
Yeah, we're off the topic here.
Question. That's a, that's a great question, Rob, for the next conversation.
Okay.
You already got.
That's fair. It's not related to the moratorium.
Okay, good. Susan?
Sorry, it takes me a while to hit that mute button. Um, we aren't, we wouldn't be first in line anyway. I think, um, if you do a little bit of research on it, I read before I heard Will Haskell repeat the same thing. Um, I saw some information about, um, that they've already, um, located zones in Connecticut. Um, and some of them cover areas I've, I've never, you know, I'm not even sure where the towns are there. Um, but that they are, they are first in line and have priority. So we're, Ridgefield is not a priority. We're not first in line. Um, so in the thought of us missing out on something, I don't, I don't know how valid that is. And I think if you go back, um, and even listen to your own presentation, um, Jeffrey, that when, um, when Will Haskell was speaking, he referenced that. Um, he didn't go into a lot of detail, but I had read something about it. And there are, um, there's like whole maps of Connecticut where they showed the areas that they're targeting because they're underserved. Um, and just for a variety of reasons, um, that you can look into. So we're not, I, I really don't believe, you know, we're going to necessarily miss out on something because I think that they're going to, um, serve those communities first and then get to those of us down here. Um, the other thing that I thought of was, um, did I hear you correctly? Um, and I believe, I don't remember whether, Rebecca, you said this back meetings before, that the other towns around us had already said no? And it was just Danbury has a moratorium, the other towns like Greenwich and everything had already made a decision, no?
Greenwich made a decision, no. Danbury has it under discussion. Newtown put a moratorium in place. I did reach out to, um, Francis Pickering at West Cog yesterday just to see what the status of the region was, and I haven't heard back from him. But as far as I know, nobody has said yes.
Yeah, so, so that's why I feel like it's not like, oh, no, we're going to be behind the eight ball with this at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. So let's, I want to keep the narrow focus on the moratorium question. The broader questions about zoning and everything else, we're, we're going to have those subsequent conversations, but. So Jeffrey, anything else before we, we go to Mr. Marconi?
No, I just want to thank you for having this conversation and I think it's a great dialogue. And, um, I'm continuing that, I'm hoping that it continues to go on.
Thank you. And I thought. Thank you. And I thought your, the ECDC presentation was very interesting as well. You had some really interesting speakers on it. It was worth 90 minutes sitting there and, and learning something. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, and did we move Mr. Marconi over?
Yes.
Okay. Rudy, can, let's see. There, there he is. Thank you for joining us, Rudy. You're, you must have a whole list of things that you would like to, to tell us based on our previous conversation.
Well, not really, just that relative to the referendum. There's no way we could get it on a November referendum. Uh, those questions have to be submitted to the Secretary of State by the first or second week of September. And that's, I think it's by, Wendy said, around the third or fourth. And that certainly passed us by.
Okay.
And, uh, we would need legal review, et cetera. So there's a time component there. The only other, uh, suggestion I made is, uh, which is what I said in July, is possibly the, uh, budget referendum in May, unless we were to do a special referendum. And of course, there's a cost component to that as well.
Right. Right. Well, May might give us a lot of time to have a lot of conversations and make the public aware that this is coming. We really want your input. These are the kind of conversations we're having.
Mm-hmm. Um. Right, right. If you were to vote for a, uh, and I've had this conversation, Becky, we did a little bit, uh, relative to what is the process that you're imagining? I'm hearing a lot of that tonight. Uh, but if the P&amp;Z Commission were to implement a moratorium, it sounds as though, are you expecting the Board of Selectmen to go to an ordinance? I'm, I'm hearing different things.
No.
But that's what the law says.
The law says the Board of Selectmen should.
We, we, we do have the, I, in, in my read of it, the municipality has a right to either, um, decide via zoning or by ordinance in the municipality.
Uh, that's fine. I'm just.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know what you're asking the Board of Selectmen to do. Um, I thought that was the case, based on the discussion in July, that you were asking the Board of Selectmen to make this decision. What my interpretation was, and I can be entirely wrong, was that you were saying, yes, proceed with the other part of the law, which says you can proceed, uh, with an ordinance. However, tonight, I'm hearing that it's, well, no, we want to send it back to the Board of Selectmen so that you can run a referendum, get the feeling of the public, and then send it back to P&amp;Z for regulations, either in favor or against.
Well, I'm glad we're having this follow-up conversation, because I, my reading was that the land use decision rested with planning and zoning.
Yeah, as a land use, yes.
Right, right. And that we were hoping the Board of Selectmen could help out on letting us understand, well, where the town was on this socially. And since we can't do a referendum question, but, uh, look, I, I don't have a position one way or the other. I think this is a collaborative effort. So the moratorium, uh, would give us time to suss this all out. And maybe, maybe this is, um, this is so unusual, Rudy. I, I don't remember us having, you know, conversations like this before. But maybe this is something where, um, you know, we, we move forward on the moratorium, and then in October, we sit down with, either with you or with the board, and we figure out, how do we want, we have 12 months to do this? How do we want to do this? And we have an election coming up in November. So some of us can start the conversation, but I don't want to point us in a direction and then have an, an election come up in November, and people feel, well, wait a minute, that wasn't the conversation we had. So I think we should start the conversation, give the town the time to do it with the moratorium. But I, I, you know, I'm, I'm open to however this process works, but I did not understand it was ordinance and planning and zoning, or?
Or it's ordinance against planning and zoning regulation.
If by ordnance, if by ordinance, we said, okay, um, through our public hearings, et cetera, then it would go back to planning and zoning to establish guidelines.
Right. Or, or no, with maybe the same thing, planning and zoning.
But if it's no, then it's over. There's no reason for a, a zoning regulation. Or you may want to do one, but it would be illegal in town.
I think, Richard.
That has to be codified.
Right. Right. We would still have to, Rudy, right?
An ordinance is law.
Understood. Yeah, but, um.
You may want to code, codify it, which is fine according to Karen, but I'm just explaining, uh, what we've done in the past relative to ordinances. It becomes law.
Yeah. Um, I, okay.
In the town.
Yeah, no, no, understood. Um, Karen?
So if you want to go ahead with the ordinance, why don't we, uh, you, you could do that tonight, and we can schedule a joint meeting, or the, you and I can get together and discuss it. However you want to go, I'm open.
Well, the only thing we've, well, but that doesn't require a public hearing, Rudy. The only, the public hearing tonight is for, just for the, with the moratorium. If, if, but I think, um, I mean, I'm always happy to sit down and, and talk with you, but, uh, I, I didn't understand we were doing ordinance and regulation. I must confess. I, I thought we were hoping for a referendum and then regulations. But, you know, honestly, it doesn't matter.
Maybe that's what, maybe that's what we decide to do. All I said was that the P&amp;Z Commission, you're moving forward tonight, one way or the other, with a moratorium.
Right.
And then, based on the moratorium, let's say it's in place, we could sit down and map out a, a way to the future.
Which is the intent of the moratorium. Right. Okay.
And that's what the moratorium gives us time to do.
Exactly right. Yeah. Right. John, did I see your hand? I did.
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate that I think this is tidier than it now sounds, that the planning, the zoning commission decides whether or not it's gonna have a moratorium. We decide we're gonna have a moratorium. That gives the town, i.e. the selectmen, time to kick around the idea of yes or no to some kind of a regulatory prohibition on this, on, on, on the substance in, within the town borders.
Right.
If, if the Board of Selectmen, through its mechanization, it would, if it wanted to hold a, a referendum, it could, but it would want to get some feedback from the community as to how the community at large feels. If the vote is finally that there is not going to be an allowance for cannabis in the border, uh, borders of the town of Ridgefield, that takes care of that. And then planning, uh, the zoning commission would write an ordinance, would write a regulation that prohibited that use.
Right.
Which we do not now have, as we all have come to realize. But it isn't one or the other. It's a succession. The state has said that the zoning commission is responsible for the decision about the use. We need to do that through now a moratorium and a thought process during the moratorium period as to whether we want to do it or not. But I think that the Board of Selectmen needs, in that period of time, to do whatever it's going to do, including have a, hold a referendum, if that's what it wants to do, to find out how the town feels about this. And it's a, it's a step process. The first step is the zoning commission to take an action, and it looks like we want to take the action of calling for a referendum.
Uh, and I, I would suggest that, you know, if, if we go forward with the moratorium this evening, then, uh, we schedule a meeting in October to start this conversation that is, is becoming, I think, more fleshed out for a lot of us than our initial meeting in July did. Robbie, were you trying to say something?
No, I, I totally agree with John. I think he's really summarized it really well. And, but for the record, I actually, I heard all of our conversation last meeting about a referendum. But my understanding, at least in my own brain, was that, uh, the Board of Selectmen was, was talking about, I actually attended one of the selectman meetings, and they were talking about potentially, uh, initiating a, a ordinance. And what, at least in my view, what I really want to do is allow the Board of Selectmen to run through that process, which I presume would include public input, uh, for a proposed ordinance, and allow the Board of Selectmen to do that, which they seemed inclined to do, before we got in the mix, uh, trying to, you know, get into the detail of the who, the how, what, where, when, regulation, allow them to run through that. And the moratorium just allows everyone, a moment, the Board of Selectmen, to, to chase the idea of an ordinance, which I thought they were headed down anyway.
Okay. Okay. Charles?
Um, yes, I, again, as last time, I, I agree with what Rob is saying, and his interpretation of what he heard, uh, last time, and that the moratorium is what I believe, and will vote in favor of, will go into effect to allow the Board of Selectmen to make their decision, um, during this moratorium period with additional information or comments from others. But they will then take that responsibility, um, to, to potentially, is what I've heard, write, write an ordinance or do something with that. And, and what, and what Rudy had, uh, Rudy Marconi had stated is, is interpretation from the last meeting, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. But I fully support the moratorium.
Okay. Good. Okay. Um, Rudy?
Yeah, ju- just to follow up, um, I would anticipate multiple public hearings. Uh, in fact, maybe some ta, a, a town meeting ultimately, if we were to do, if the Board of Selectmen discusses this, and the board agrees to move forward with public hearings, or a town meeting on an ordinance, or a referendum, all of those options are available. Right?
Agreed. I agree completely. There, there's opportunity for public input at every point along the way.
Yes.
Okay, good. So I, I want to make sure, so, uh, Rudy, it sounds like you do support, um, going forward with the moratorium to give the town an opportunity to discuss how to move forward over the, with the next steps, because that's great. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see we have another hand up. Um, Kirk Carr? Let's see, we'll ask Mr. Carr to unmute. Mr. Carr, we should be able to hear you now.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
Um, I, uh, attended both the, uh, public hearing and the meeting last night of the Economic and Community Development.
Can we get Mr. Carr to give us his address, please?
Oh, certainly. 62 Prospect Ridge, sorry.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Uh, I attended both of, of their meetings, the public hearing, and they're only, and I was very happy, uh, to hear Jeff Morris support the moratorium. And it appears you're going the direction that I would support, which is in favor of a moratorium. There, I really don't see any downside to the moratorium for all the reasons that you've discussed. Um, and I, just one thing I would, I might correct, is I believe Danbury has passed a moratorium on, on cannabis. So I don't, I don't think there's much of a chance of you being preempted in some way by cannabis, uh, going to other communities because of a loss of the, of the license. So it sounds like you're going the direction I would support, and that is in favor of a moratorium. And, um, so I hope you will pass it at your earliest opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Uh, others? Excuse, excuse me. Others who would like to make comment this evening? Mr. Connolly? Uh, we should be able to hear you now, Mr. Connolly. Oh, yeah, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Uh, thanks. Um, so yeah, I, I, one of the things I wanted to say was, yeah, that was my information as well, that Danbury had put in a moratorium that would end, I guess, July 29th. But it looks like Westport is working on a Trumbull, Danbury, Newtown, um, Southington, Greenwich have all actually put something in, and a number of others, New Canaan and others. It, my information is Bridgeport was working, uh, something that says they were to expressly allow it. So they were actively encouraging it. But, but yeah, it, it does seem like there's plenty of others that are out there that are saying, uh, really the same track that we are considering, which is, let's put a moratorium, let's understand the input of the community, and then we can go there. And, and just, um, that's not saying anything terribly new, but I would say in addition to public meetings and a potential for a, a referendum, uh, I, I just think, what I'm trying to do is my own research, looking at what other towns that have done this done, uh, have done. Uh, I have reached out to, uh, fire and, and police chiefs, uh, Creighton Myers, just to see, you know, what their perspective is. I would like to, you know, talk to local businesses, maybe Chamber of Commerce, right? You know, they'll have a perspective. So I, I just think there's a lot of different voices we need to hear, and a moratorium will allow us the time, uh, to do that and do that effectively. So, uh, just another vote supporting, advocating for the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. And, uh, I believe I need to ask you for your address for the record, please.
Oh, sure. Uh, 550 Barrack Hill Road, Ridgefield, Connecticut.
Very good. Thank you. Other, uh, comments this evening? No? Okay. Going once, going twice on public comments before we take it back to the commission? Okay, thank you, everyone. That's the end of public comment on this. We'll take it back. Is the commission, um, at a point where they're ready to close the public hearing? Uh, or would, you got any further discussion? Uh, we can have, as a commission, it is on the agenda this evening for discussion and action, uh, if the commission feels that there's something more that needs to be said during the public hearing?
I'd like one more, um, point of.
Sorry, Joe.
Uh, Joe Dowdell?
I just had one more, um, point of clarification or reminder. I think a lot of us probably already know this, but I just wanted to remind, there's a lot of discussion about possibly an ordinance, or the question of, you know, yes or no, and the use and everything. Um, but really, the, the question is land use and, um, yes or no to retail and agriculture and so on. Um, but the, the use and possession of cannabis has already been legalized. So it's not really up to, we're, we're not, we're not able to make an ordinance or a regulation banning possession or use of the substance. It's really just, the only question is, um, sales and growth, you know, agriculture and so on. Um, just wanted to remind everyone to clarify that that's what, if there was an ordinance, it wouldn't be banning it completely.
Okay, thank you. But this public hearing is really about whether or not to adopt a moratorium, to continue to further study ordinances and, and zoning regulations.
Understood. I just, I just wanted, yeah, there was some comment about that, and I just wanted to add that. But yeah, that's, I understood. Yep.
Okay. Uh, Charles, and then John?
Yeah, I, I'd actually like to move approval for a moratorium.
We're still in the public hearing. So we need to conclude the public hearing.
Okay, okay.
Hold that thought. That's a good thought. Hold that thought. Uh, John?
Um, this is directed to Joe, um, Dowdell. I, I think everything you said, Joe, has a great deal of merit, and it has so much merit in so many different capacities, that it enables me to say, you've actually supported the idea of a moratorium. Because a moratorium would be a, a, a time period where people could come to each other and to group meetings to say many of the things that you have said. And I'm just encouraging you to support the moratorium, not because you disagree with where we are as a commission now, but because you agree with where we are as a commission now, in support of a moratorium to give the public and officials, who are included in the public, time to think this thing through and talk this thing through. But you haven't said anything tonight that isn't absolutely accurate, and also very much in line with a moratorium.
Said no pressure.
Okay, well, yeah, thank you for your comments, but I agree to this. I, I disagree on how to handle it, but I, thank you for your comments.
That's just fine.
Yeah.
Any, any more comments?
One thing before we move, uh, I guess I'd like to ask, and I'm sorry to belabor it, but I, I'd like to ask, and I guess mainly from Joe Dowdell, because he is representing, uh, you know, uh, an, an end of the spectrum here. But we've heard from others, including Jeff, about the time sensitivity. Uh, so I guess I'd love to know whether, is there any merit in at least discussing a shorter timeframe other than a year? Because it really seems like that's the substantive concern that a couple of people have put out. And maybe we could be unanimous and more, you know, more unequivocal, even with some of our public testimony, um, if we looked at something more in the six to nine months range instead of a year. We, we take away that one concern that a couple of people have raised.
And that, that's certainly open for discussion. Uh, we had recommended 12 months because that was what we had, uh, adopted, um, back in 2014. And we did the same thing before that on wood burning stoves. We gave ourselves a year to, because the, the state's understanding of how they're gonna proceed is still evolving. Uh, and so rather than shorten the window for information gathering, we wanted to extend it. Once the, um, Susan, I, I'm, I'm not ignoring the. Once the, um, Susan, I, I'm, I'm not ignoring you. I just, Karen, Karen and I had a con- Karen and I, we had a conversation today during the staff meeting and Karen reminded us that once the commission adopts a moratorium, it can cease the moratorium at any point by, um, another amendment to the regulations. So if we go forward with twelve months, um, that does not obligate the commission to hold it for the entire twelve months. So that flexibility might be nuanced. Susan?
You just read my mind, Rebecca. That's exactly what I was going to say. Uh, yeah, that, that we could shorten it. And the other, my other, um, my other argument for keeping that long length is because we've had such a tumultuous, uh, last year and a half with, um, the COVID and, you know, let's just not, I, I don't want to jinx anything, but so let's not shorten it and then, you know, box ourselves into a corner. Um, like you said, we can always take it, you know, i- if everything's going smoothly and this, and this is our biggest worry, I hope this is our biggest worry, um, that we don't have to go back to where we were, um, a year, a year and a half ago. Um, then we will be able to complete it probably quicker. But, um, let's not put that pressure on, um, you know, the Board of Selectmen and everybody with everything that's going on. So.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else before we close? No? Okay. No, it is eight ten. We will close the public hearing on the regulation amendment for, that was noticed as, um, the application to amend the regulations for a temporary moratorium. Public hearing is now closed. Before we go into discussion, I would like to ask the commission's support to add an item to the end of our agenda after, um, new submissions. Thank you. Uh, and this would be add an item to have a discussion, uh, about a transitional calendar. Uh, as we go, as we get closer to November, I would just like to have a short conversation with the commission about our thinking going forward. So.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We had a motion from John and a second from Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, motion passes and it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. So let's go into the discussion portion of our agenda. Uh, the only item noticed for discussion is the regulation amendment to our zoning regulations to, um, adopt a temporary moratorium. Public hearing has closed. It's at the table for discussion and action.
Uh, I would like to move approval for a moratorium for a period of one year effective.
The effective date would be the twenty-fourth of September.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. Do you like to speak?
Could I ask, um, if P O S is also including the definitions in section two point two?
Yes, this is section nine point two point B, section eight point six and section two point two, which were all subject, um, of, to the, of the public hearing this evening. Okay. Charles, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, I, I, I think we've had a, a, a good and an honest and open discussion about the need for further review and evaluation of the, uh, pros and cons of, um, allowing for the retail use of, of cannabis. And we, we've talked, uh, uh, and this will lead up to the reason for moratorium. We've talked about responsibilities of planning and zoning, responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen, uh, the approach that they would take, whether through additional referendum or through ordinance or combination. So while we've spoken tonight, we haven't, as a group, fully resolved all of these issues, which in turn, I believe, leads to a need for a moratorium to further discuss this, to bring in the people of Ridgefield and, for their opinion, and to allow what appears to be the Board of Selectmen to make an informed and educated decision about how they want to, assuming it's them, but about how they want to move forward. So that is why I fully support a moratorium at this time.
Okay, thank you. George?
As I said before, I think this is something that the citizens of Ridgefield have to be involved with. It's, uh, almost too big for the selectmen and for the Board of Planning and Zoning. Uh, we need a lot of input from the townspeople.
Okay, thank you. Others? John?
There is absolutely no cogent reason not to have a moratorium and not even an uncogent one has been suggested.
Thank you. Ben? You, you're muted, Ben. There you go.
Okay, I, um, I thought that, um, Joe Dowdell raised quite, um, a very important point. That I'm wondering if there's a way in the mori- moratorium, we could, um, sort of use that as an opportunity to tell and educate the public that this is not about banning the use of cannabis. Because at the state level, it's, it's, it's a law. You can use it legally. So I'm wondering whether there could be an opportunity through this moratorium to put some language in there that will sort of clarify and make sure people know that this moratorium is not about banning the use of cannabis, but you can use cannabis legally. So I'm just throwing that out, if that's an opportunity to do that.
Um, I believe the language would be that the, uh, Karen, do you, did you draft language? You're muted.
You included all that in the.
Draft language, one way or, uh.
To, well, Ben wants to make sure that the, the moratorium language is clear, that this is a twelve-month moratorium to, where is your? Uh, a twelve-month moratorium to, uh, prohibit the submission of applications or submission of applications for retail cannabis, cannabis establishments. That, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about personal use or any of that. We're just talking about.
It's very specific. It talks about applications received by the department or by the commission. It makes no reference to.
To use.
Consumption of any kind.
Right. Right.
I'm, I'm wondering whether this is an opportunity, because I could, I could easily see where, based on the discussion we just had, I could easily see where people get confused and think that we're talking about banning the use of marijuana or cannabis. So I'm wondering whether this is an opportunity to specify that what's allowed by law, even though we're trying to get the opinion about if we can support the establishment of retail, uh, organizations within Ridgefield to sell cannabis.
John?
Well, I think that the, uh, the discussions that we've had, um, not everybody has heard them. And I don't see anybody being confused about this. That the, the way the moratorium would be drafted couldn't possibly go to the legal legality of use of marijuana, because that's not what the moratorium is about. A moratorium is a moratorium against having to accept applications in behalf of those who would like to establish, uh, retail outlets for this use. The use itself is.
Yeah, a municipality can't even regulate that, uh, private consumption. It's just totally out, there's categories in the legislation that state, you know, a town can regulate this, this and this. And anything involving consumption in your private home, um, is just not under the regulate, you know, it's, it's now legal. So I don't, I don't think there's too much confusion, because that's not a bucket that the towns can even touch.
Susan?
But if someone would, if someone would like to see some language in there, I mean, I'm, I'm open to hearing it. I think it's relatively clear.
No. Wasn't the subject of the public hearing this evening?
Yeah, it's not the subject.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just totally set, you know, it's totally separate. And I think it's pretty clear that this just has to do with land use applications.
Right.
Not being received for a year.
Right. Susan?
So, um, I, I, I have heard some of that confusion, um, but this sounds like what we could do to solve this, if, if that, that language doesn't belong in what we're writing. Um, it's almost like a press release. It's almost like a PR thing, a press release. When we do what we're about to do, whatever it is, um, that there's a press release, you release it to, you know, the press or the social media, wherever you're going to go with it. And it says, this is what the planning and zoning did this evening. And then you just make a, a little statement afterwards that this in no way infringes on, um, uh, you know, your personal right, however, this is not the discussion. And you just make a, like a little statement, a little clarifying statement as you release whatever it is that you're officially doing as planning and zoning, uh, whatever, whatever the language is of the moratorium this evening, if we vote for it. Um, and then that might resolve what Joe was talking about, what, um, Ben is talking about. I have heard people, um, say that. I, I'm hearing the discussion because I'm out in the, you know, kind of public, you know, down around town and people will come up and say, oh my gosh, they should allow smoking marijuana. And, and I'm like, I, people really haven't, they don't realize there are people literally that do not realize that it's already a regulation by the state. It's already allowed. Um, so maybe that would just clarify it, like two sentences on a press release with whatever we vote on tonight, and that might satisfy that.
Thanks, Susan. Joe Dowdell?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think the language is fine. My main concern, kind of what Rob was getting at, was the length of time. I mean, I, I think we should have a sense of urgency and, and do something, however we want to do quickly. And, um, in, I, I, I fear to sort of, if it's too long, sort of like we're kicking the can down the road and the risk not doing anything and banning it for, you know, too, too long. Um, you, you know, so if, if we did say have like a six-month moratorium, like I could support that. Um, I, I think that was my main concern and not, not the idea in, in general. I think it's fine to, you know, research a little bit, see what the town thinks. But I, I think it was the length of time and the fear that we were just be kicking the can, can down the road for too long.
Okay.
But again, the, the mor-, I'm sorry, Becky, but the twelve months doesn't mean that the moratorium or the decision must take twelve months. If the Board of Selectmen, in co- in combination with whomever they work with, believes that they can accomplish what they want in three and a half months, four months, then it's over in four months.
I understand that. Right. I think we should go the other way. We should start with six months and if you need to extend it, add another six months. I don't think we should go the other way.
Well, I'm.
But then maybe we disagree. So.
Yeah, I just disagree on that.
As the maker of the motion, if the maker of the motion is not willing to amend the motion.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't be willing to amend the motion, but you know, I could be overruled, of course.
Unless Joe wants to propose to amend the motion.
I'm sorry, Rob?
If Joe wants to propose to amend the motion, then we have to take a vote on that, right?
That's right.
That's true.
We need a parliamentarian.
Uh, that's, Robert's rules are our friends. That's how we run the meetings. Right. Rob? Oh, but I think Rob's volunteering to be the parliamentarian.
No, they are, they are my rules.
So, uh, additional comments? Richard?
I, I would just like to comment on the, um, comments about clarifying this. I, I would, experience has shown that basically the moratorium is going to be a prohibition. To add wording to the prohibition, whether under or over in, stating something that is already permitted by law will only go to adding more confusion to this. I think the moratorium, as it's written, is very clear, succinct and confined. Um, I, I understand that some people may be confused. I think a lot of people are confused. But all that will play out during the upcoming discussions that planning and zoning will have and that the, uh, Board of Selectmen may have. But to, to try and put in wording saying that something's permitted while you're actually adopting something to prohibit something is, is just going to make, make it even more confusing. And I would ask that the commission seriously consider that, um, when you vote on this.
Thank you, Richard. John?
I was going to make that point. Thank you, Richard, for making it.
Yes. Thank you, Richard, for making the point. I concur.
Okay, so, um, it does not sound like we are amending the motion to approve as presented and discussed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion before we vote?
Was there a second?
There was. George seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we have a motion by Charles and a second by George to adopt a twelve-month moratorium on, um, any applications or approval of cannabis establishments as defined by Public Act twenty-one dash one from September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one to September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Eight. All those opposed? We have eight opposed and Mr. Dowdell, excuse me, we have eight in support and Dowdell opposed. Motion passes and it's, uh, final and the effective date is the twenty-fourth of September. Thank you, everyone. And thank you to all who attended the public hearing on this matter this evening. It was a very good discussion. Let's go on to the next section.